Okay, we'll call a meeting order. This is a meeting of Young County Commissioners Court, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2013, 10:00 AM. I will note that it is a special meeting. Also note that notice of this meeting has been duly posted for the time and in the manner required, and that all members are to order our press. If it's convenient, will you please stand?
Besides our duty to do this, pray. I'm Mr. Strykes, Havelin, Fido. Thank you for this wonderful day in Young County. Thank you for the privilege you've given us to help serve this community in whatever way that you see best. Please grant us wisdom to make proper decisions for everyone concerned. Please bring us the blessing of rain. We are so much appreciated and we so much desire. We ask all this in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, put our allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Right, make your vote, please say it. Item number three on the agenda, public comments, presentations, are there any that need to be noted at this time? I don't believe that I have any. Item number four, consider county clerk's minutes previous meeting, August 26th, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections that need to be made?
I got two, good, Jane.
Item number nine.
The dollar amount of vouchers should be 118,0996.139. 139. This is a typo where this needs to be changed. Item number 11, also a typo on the date, should be 2013 instead of 2013.
Have those been changed, Havelin? Excuse me? Have those been changed on our copies?
Uh, I don't believe they have.
Okay. That's all I see, just those changes. Okay. And we have a motion out by Commissioner Rogers, the second class, Mr. Wiley, to accept those meetings as correct. All in favor? Aye, carry it. By all opposition, as correct. Item number five, consider selling more attachment to a commission precinct for a big lot.
Uh, Brad showed all the taxes to Skitchfield, it's a second tier, far less than old more, on the way back, sent out bids to the paper, and sent in money, like, speed, but, uh, it would be turning to something else. Bids bill, what day? The 23rd, that's our last court date, since January 3rd. Okay. Can they, bids be human, in her office spot? Four, five, right, yes, right before. If that would be the only first one, please? Yeah. Eight, eight, the twenty, about three o'clock in her office, and opening at ten o'clock at eight thirty.
Any further discussion on that, Havelin? Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Wiley, and second by Commissioner Pruitt, to have a bid for attachment to be received in the officer's office by 4:00 PM Friday, the twentieth, to be open at 10:00 AM on Monday, the 23rd. On the vote, aye, carry it. You having your back of the tax resale deed from Brandon, Parton, Fielder, Collins, and Mott, our tax attorneys, for a bid amount of $750, as described in that, their motion to accept such bid, so, aye. Got a motion by Commissioner Wiley, and second by Commissioner Rogers, to accept such bid, $750, for sale property, being 1203, whatever that name is in all, in Gorman, Gavin, Allen, in, all in favor? Aye, carry it. Item number seven, it's been brought to the attention of the court, that meeting that we held, August 15th, 2013, was violating the Open Meetings Act, due to its name as an emergency meeting, it did not meet the requirements, and that proper notice from the timestamp on, did not meet the requirements. Such items could be voided in such circumstance, so I'll make the motion that we rescind all activity, all actions that we took on August 15th, 2013, in Commissioners' Court. Aye, carry it. Got a motion by County Judge John Bullock, second by Commissioner Pruitt, to rescind all actions taken in Commissioners' Court's meeting of August 15th, 2013. All in favor? Aye, carry it. Item number eight. This is a reconsideration of action of June 24th, 2013, to split the payment on the window renovation plan for 2013 and 2014 budget year. I think Commissioner Wiley originally had that motion to rescind action taken on that day, and to proceed toward funding that entire project, this was the motion once more? Yes. Second by Commissioner Pruitt. All in favor of such motion? Aye, carry it. Item number nine, is consider change order number two, which is with regard to the window project, and adding to that, the waterproofing and wall repair that was necessary, and B five, is that right? B five. Motion by Mr. Wiley? Aye, second. To issue change order number two, all in favor? Aye, carry it. Skip number 10, run to number 11, that's consider payment about $21,338.24, and budget amendments of August 15th, 2013, that was with regard to the county attorney's office, where he moved the $250, requested moving $250 from office supplies, and $500, let me read, $250 from office supplies, and $500, that was from education, and $500 from office supplies to the part-time, for a total of $750, Frank's burden.
To the head of the voucher sheet, will you, I will resign it, you're going to know on your, what it was for.
Do we have a second amendment? We have a motion by Commissioner Sigh, second by Commissioner Wiley, to approve vouchers payable, and budget amendments, as indicated, all in favor? Aye, carry it. I believe that, I'll, suckle, I'll get them. Take back to item number 10, consider group medical dental benefits, term insurance for Young County employees, table from August 12th, 2013. Do we have any discussion on such item? Well, we're doing a settlement, that's, that's, excuse me, where are we right now with that? We have accepted bids, or we have not accepted bids? We have accepted bids, we have studied those bids, we took action on that, in a meeting that was deemed to be improper, and so action is now in line? Okay. So we need to, you're accepting bids again? No, we've accepted bids, we voted bids, we studied bids. We need to shake a vendor. We do. And if you read the law, the government code, it talks about the lowest bidder on 262027, and then also, you need to rate 262027-1. 262027-C states that if it's not awarded to the lowest bidder, the lowest bidder might be notified. I think that notice has been duly given of the intent of the court to award the bid. I believe that Mr. Webb and RHA spent a good, good deal of time here explaining their bid. Would you like to have another second?
Yes, sir.
Please come forth.
I do appreciate y'all resetting my first statement. The reason I'm here is because I felt like our bid was basically misrepresented in the emergency meeting, so therefore all actions in that meeting were void. I wanted to correctly present my bid, and the opposing bid. I don't feel like that was done, I don't think the numbers that were given in that emergency meeting were correct. We've gone over these numbers again, and basically, for the $57,975 cheaper on these costs, I don't believe we saw that that way.
I wasn't in that meeting, but, uh, you were in the meeting that we had the discussion on, and you, in fact, the matter is, Ms. Sadyers left, and you spent the rest of the afternoon with us, you had every opportunity to make that point out, if you think that it was, I don't believe it was that much.
I've got the numbers right here. Here's my argument.
I said, can you list those numbers out?
I've got them right here.
Could you present them to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to talk, I want to think, um, to this. My other argument is, if it was, I don't know what was presented by Ms. Roberts in that emergency meeting, I don't know which quotes presented.
The original quote was, I didn't have anything else.
I didn't say you did. I said, I just wondered which one it was.
Mr. Webb, the quotes that were open were the ones that were presented, the only numbers that we ever saw before we made any on that decision.
Okay, I understand that, and I, I believe that. But, the conflation is, everybody keeps saying there's minimal notice, well, there's minimal if you take their second bid, as opposed to my first bid. If you take their original bid and my original bid, we, there is no, we didn't have that difference.
We didn't have any.
We discussed it, linked on Monday, the 19th, though, and that's when Mr. Wiley, he said it's a wash, and you consider the new bid. Okay, and that new bid should not have been considered, in that 19th meeting.
It was not considered.
Mr. Wiley, did you say, did you say even with the new bid, it's a wash?
What I said was, and my exact words in that was, is the fact that we made a decision based on what we feel like, the $3,000 that we seen on this deal, we went with the $3,000 difference. Okay. And my other words was, is, is the fact that when we made that decision, before we drew the bank, I want this office, got her an email, hours later, as we already went to recess, and after we come back to lunch, it's still maybe a wash. That is exactly what I said.
Well, it's not a wash, y'all, it is not even nearly a wash. It's the number.
I believe in that meeting, I stated that she, if she was $49,000 cheaper.
You said it to me standing right here. So what changed from that, to that you think it's nominal? You sent it to me, looks like y'all are $49,000 cheaper, right off the bat, like 12.
I never said that you get started, you did.
I did. And I, I think I believe, in that meeting too, I said that if she got a second chance, that he should have a second chance.
And mine would have a second, mine would have a second chance.
Well, she submitted the, not before, not before we made the decision. I'll have to be clear, we made our decisions based on the explanation of the original bids.
Yes.
Okay. Now whether or not we fully understood those original bids, we understood them the best they were explained.
Yes.
To agree with that.
Yes. That was my fault.
And we did choose a bid that we knew at the time was somewhat high, we had decided there was some value in selecting that bid, due to that.
They called it bid stats?
Right.
And they knew the medical history, they did bid on medical, dental, and life insurance, which were in our spec.
You know, I, Mr. Webb, I believe the bid's history here at this court, of maybe not looking fully at the value of a bid when we look at it, as far as insurance, I believe you were involved last year with a property casualty bidding situation, where we probably took the lowest bidder, I said, we, I wasn't on the court at that time, took the lowest bidder, and we should have took maybe more consideration, in understanding the value of the bid, it's somewhat higher, and I think maybe we have seen that maybe is the case sometimes. So, I mean, that places you on the other side of that coin at that time. And here, we're just trying to, as you well know, I'm not happy with this bid situation anyway, but I think we're bidding the wrong policy. That being said, this is what we've got to work with. In my understanding, at the time I, I was the one that made the motion, that we were, okay?
At least in your point, before I forget.
Yes, sir. If the difference was minimal, what are we saying the minimal was, in that August 15th meeting? And although those actions were void, and we rescinded that, what was the minimal, what was the percentage?
I think the number mentioned was less than $3,000.
Answer me this question. Why did group resources come back what they bid, 30, some 35,000 dollars cheaper, if they thought the difference was minimal? They knew what the difference was, that's why they sent an email to her?
When did they?
Give us an email, changing their bid. Which, if I can continue what I was saying.
Sorry, how about they changed?
If they thought it was, if they thought it was.
We can negotiate after that bid is checked.
Let, let me go ahead and lay out what I had, one of the emails I had, I actually dated 14th, which is the day.
We made, we did not make a decision, oh, yeah, secondary bid, we did not make any information. That information was gleaned by us, after we had made the decision to put it up. I, here is their red bid, and I stated August 14th at the bottom, it was the day before the August 15th meeting.
I need to accomplish, you know, their.
Why did they change their bid?
I don't recall.
They thought they were close to us. I don't know why they did, the point was, this court, this court didn't know that.
I'm not saying the court knew that.
I'm not saying that, y'all, the bid was awarded before we do.
I'm saying they knew the difference.
What the difference was.
It's $35,000, that's why they sent the email, it says, we have revised premium, they dropped it from 492 to 457,000. Why would they do that if they thought they were close to us? They thought, they knew they were losing the bid, that's why they sent this email on the 15th, and I'm not saying that you guys used this email. You told me that, and I believed you when you told me that. Okay, that's not my argument. My argument is, if the numbers that we all talked about were minimal, why would they go and lose this money? The only thing, the only paper I ever saw was the paper that's given to us on the 12th, well, you know, August 14th, group resources, and they call that. That's why I came back in here today, because I want to present this to you. And that's the reason I made a bid, a motion of the 26th.
Yeah.
Is it being this? Excuse me.
I would like for you to read it, please.
Mr. Webb, take it, have the floor. Okay. I got a motion, you're running high, and you want to get your opinions here, let me finish what I had to say. Okay? I made a motion to try to rescind what we had done. The court decided they had done it in good faith. I mean, it was brought their attention, in their good conscience, they voted that they had done it in good faith. Okay? We did not know any information, other than the two bids that were given to us at the time, and in the manner in which they were explained, is what we based our decision. If, if there was an error there, that's why I made the motion to undo that, but the court decided otherwise. This is what the court wants. I understand your, your, this is a difficult matter to understand, and I would still like to hear your explanation of how your $57,000 cheaper, if I added 40.
Okay.
All right. And we were talking, I was the judge initially told 50, and it went down to 22, that's back to 57.
I want to make this comment, please. Last presentation, I, we just all, you know, grants, that's your $22,000 cheaper. $22,000 cheaper, but yet your numbers have changed here again.
I just went back with, I don't know if that was usual.
But if that is the meaning, it's a, it was me. Something like that, it was me. And I, I'm, I'm the same thing, that it was cheaper, we should go with cheaper. I did say that.
Okay.
The point is, the numbers always change.
Well, and I'm going to be honest, I mean, Mr. Kelly knows this better than I do, and I was not in on that, when there was a lot going on, and he was having trouble answering. I'm not going to defend him, I mean, I don't know. We went over it again, this weekend, and our fixed cost, I mean, you can see it, on the, on the two proposals, the difference in just fixed cost is, and then, the fixed cost is 63,996, that is from my original proposal, my original proposal.
That's a lot of money. Actually, that, we made a decision in a meeting that you called into question, we rescinded any action of that meeting, you've had your time to say what you want to say, with regard to that, is there a motion on the court? I'll make a motion that we maintain our group medical dental benefits with group resources, as originally intended. Okay, motion made by County Judge John C. Bullock, seconded by Commissioner Wiley, to maintain our current administration of our medical insurance, the dental benefits and our term insurance, with group resources. All in favor of that motion?
Uh, motion. I see.
Is that four, one? One. I appreciate that you're working, your effort in that, to make through this part of it. Is there any other matter that needs to come to the court?
Yeah.
Excuse me? But yeah, okay.
This is open enrollment, September, I have some employees that are wanting to add their dependent on here, either their children or their spouse, I have our current rate we talked about, that even what we were charging for the children before, we weren't getting the rate back enough to make the right, now, the spouse and the family, that we did collect a little bit more to go on our claims fund, but on, on the children, we did not. Like I said, all I have is an email, nothing's been said, and, and they could stick with the original prices that y'all been on, I don't, but do we want to try to raise the dependent cost, where we at least get enough money to pay our premium?
Well, I think that's right, I think we need to collect the amount made that's required to cover the cost. Would we have any recommendation on that?
What we can do is, we can go with what I originally proposed, or we can go just with kind of the fixed costs, it's whatever y'all want to do on that. We can set any amount you want to, as far as the dependent. Now, there's one thing that I would want to do, and it probably have to come approval through a different, you know, meeting and everything, but because of Obamacare, there's going to be, that some of your employees may qualify for some subsidies on their individual side, where what I would have to do is just come in and write it individually, get up there and write the statement. If y'all do raise them, that's, you know.
No, that, because, to me, I mean, the employee that does have the dependence on their, this little 3% raise that you gave them, isn't covered, they're actually going to lose money, I don't think that's right.
Well, we were charging 270 per children, but in turn on our premium, we haven't paid 293, I believe, or 296, we were, we were losing a little bit there, nothing going into our claims fund for children. Like I said, on the spouse and the, on the family, we are collecting a little bit more, but that children is one or 10, one or many other children, so I don't, I'm not sure what that.
Well, that's why there's ball insurance, there's one or 10 ball insurance, so it's like.
So I'm not sure what the, the charge is going to be, you know, all I have to do is wait till we get the contract, I guess, and see what the contract is, do you just want to charge what the premium is for dependents?
That's the way I do it, that's the way I do it. Is this the right form?
Right now, there's, well, that's what she said, this is what it is, it's a matter of, it's too many, you know, she was suggesting going home, but we can subject it to anything.
This is adjustable by us?
Yes, this is totally up to us, yes. And it's just that, see here, it's the 270 plus the 13 is the 283, on the spouse, it's 386, which is, is that 39?
399.
And then family, and dependent on, you know, if they hope, if they hope with, you know, I don't, I don't place it, that first bid, the dependent was higher, the other one is still higher than what we have now, but our employee cost is, so, depends on what the contract's going to say. I think if I looked at, we'd have to go up, and remember it's split up into two different checks, we might have to go up as much as $40 a month, which means like $20 a check.
Many dependents still we have, and take out the chair too.
We have 23 employees that have dependents.
Is that from, to me, anyone who drinks in that library? No, I read.
Out of ninety-seven, whether it's bigger than two. And we've got some that are talking about adding them.
Cut that to free premium.
Um.
Or in great share.
That would cover at least that premium. Like I say, I can bring them.
Did you say under the new contract that employees had gone down, dependents had gone up?
Just a little bit. And, and it's lumped together when you get the bill in to say you have your wife or you have your child on here. Each one is lumped together as one price, not one. And that's why we didn't charge them more for spouse, we didn't charge them more for premium, so it's covered there. Um. And that's because the employee went there and, uh, so we're charging them.
This is confused.
Sorry. Need a crystal ball. Need to figure out what process.
That's like all the truth is here.
Yeah. I'm talking about.
Dependant.
Yeah, and we're talking about children here. I'm looking at like thirty-six dollars a month difference than what it was. And that's covered the premium. So that's divided by two and it's on two separate checks, so.
Are we not simply charging the business cost for the cost of?
Uh, we want a little bit for your claims funds and we weren't even charging the, the children enough to cover. We'd be charged.
Was it, was it taken to cover our claims? You don't know?
No, you don't. It's just.
What's this number out here? Is it just?
No, that's, that's the two seventy plus the thirteen.
Okay, two seventy plus thirteen.
Well, that's your two eighty-three.
That's it. You got it.
And if they'll stick with what they sent me later, the difference is less than forty dollars.
Okay, so we need to make that, uh, we have the dental in there. This will be without dental and that'd be three twenty-three with the dental. Is that what I?
Well, I, when I figured it out, it was like three nineteen and seventy-three.
Okay. Well, put one down there, three.
And that's just probably much older.
And that'd be thirty-six dollars later.
That's what I figured. And that's a straight number to the check, so it'd be about eighteen dollars a check.
That the average, average raise, the average report was basically seventy-five dollars a month. So if you do this, you're punishing them too.
I mean, it, it is, it's way up the century. It's almost two hundred dollars a month. Are, are you, are you recommending that we pick up some cost and insurance?
And that's what you do. If you stick with what you have, then the county just picks up that other part.
So it's been had anywhere.
It had its fan and, you know, it wasn't much, uh, two eighty-three versus two ninety-six, so.
Or sometimes you should do that. We're, uh, really a company. We're.
With any kind of.
Well, slipped in your check here if you pay for insurance, just like what's slipped in your check here to make your car payment, your grocery payment, everything else. If they're going to pay the other check to provide their member the insurance, I'm glad that it's got three percent, three percent offset. So would we be if they hadn't had the raise and they had the insurance increasing? I mean, it's, it's a possible situation. Was I able to help you?
What is, what you're going to read in the other check? It's tasteful when they got you repaired. They got to save that a lot of, you know, manage your taxes and stuff, basically. Um, y'all, I just want to do.
We want to increase the cost of dependent coverage too. I believe that would be, I figured that right, three oh six, without dental and three nineteen with dental.
Sounds fine. But they've got the year dental's thirteen. That's why he's figuring thirteen with dental.
On the dental. Let's say a child, we can well the kids, look at that, decades, from decade to twenty-nine and then dental loss includes braces on decade. Their check will be, or unless you support some three thousand, or something like that.
They don't have a lot, because trust me, I had to. Get paid for it for dollars.
Some, but they always, they always max orthodontics to like a thousand.
Yeah, but say it, it's just the first dollar benefit, doesn't go very deep.
Right.
So it doesn't pay for braces.
No.
Against your starting.
Right, that I had too and it, and it, yeah. But to call on stuff like catapause, claydum, the rounds and stuff like that, it takes care of all that kind of stuff. If that cash comes out of your pocket, will be part greater than what the cost would be.
I don't know about the part greater. Sometimes the cost of dental insurance is kind of a dollar in, dollar out situation. You're actually paying as much for the dental insurance as the benefit will pay you. Unless, of course, you have that South Dakota North of Donuts, which in that case is open a door opener into getting your child's feet repaired. It doesn't cover the other four thousand dollars it's going to cost to do that. So therefore, everyone who can't afford to do that is supplementing those people who open that door and use that one thousand dollar benefit. And that's where the price pressure comes up to raise those increases. Because not everybody will have against the enforcement. That's all.
Yeah, dental, that's thirteen dollars a month.
Yes, sir.
So sure, we get a hundred and fifty-six dollars in benefit, dentist, um, for thirteen dollars.
Right. But from this, I cover teeth payment.
You get two a year.
And that's. And that's very, very efficient. We're trying to clean, clean.
Once again, depend what the insurance companies contract with a dentist to pay them, what you would pay them going in and out of your pocket, what insurance company ends up paying to do the things and cost and everything type.
So it's whatever. I mean, if y'all want to leave it this way, we're paying a portion of the children. That's fine. We can, we can do that, continue on. Um, it's just.
Not being a question of the dependent coverage, about thirty-six dollars.
I think that's what it figured out to about thirty. That's just for the children one. As far as the spouse and the family, we're collecting over what we're being charged for a little bit for the, yeah, claims fund, but we just had been, we haven't changed the dependent coverage several years since I was new, so it kind of got.
Okay, so spouse and children, five twenty-eight is what we're doing now?
Yes.
And that's going to be adequate enough to cover them?
Yes.
So we're just speaking in tribute about the children?
Yes, sir. It's the only one that we weren't collecting that part.
So that's one meeting?
That's one meeting.
Okay. Maybe I've got that spread.
Yeah. And it's just open enrollments right now. I have, we have someone to add there. I know they want to add some spouses, but, um.
What is the pleasure of the court on that issue?
Y'all don't like it. I'm just going to figure out. Has any dependence to get out the children, the children?
You don't have, or just children, don't we? There, maybe three, is that right?
Well, three.
Or not. I don't know.
Well, I, I see it, I see it this way there. I'm sure we have employees that aren't buying dependent coverage because they simply can't afford it.
Definitely.
And who got employees buying dependent coverage, whether they can afford it or not, they're footing the bill. Is it proper for us to give them additional benefits that we're not giving to others because they can't afford to buy the insurance at all? So you're only helping the ones that end up buying the dependent coverage.
Some of your.
You're not helping those who can't afford to buy their benefit coverage.
Some of your children.
So if you're supplementing one fund, but you're really disregarding others.
Some of our court ordered to pay, you know, have the children on there and.
And that's a personal situation that's.
Yes.
Got themselves in two.
We, you know, they, they do.
I don't think they got, I'm not into it. None happens. I think that happens.
Yeah, life's whole, is it?
Yes, dear.
So, you know, I'm thinking that it might be best if we just charge one cost and then go there, there most.
Uh, I don't, no, it's not, because I was in discussion. I want to know what you think, sounding court here.
Well, uh, I think it's the court's call whether they want to supplement, I think the coverage, and that's just exactly what that is. Probably not proper, uh, under these circumstances if we were out of right sector or something like that, probably could be appropriate if we wanted to do that for the taxpayer's dollar. I think, I think we're committed to, uh, spend as little as is possible. Uh, so, uh, I, I agree with you that I think that that is benefit only to those that afford the bag. Mr. Brett, what's your idea of this?
I think we should, uh, do what that's is right now and then consider it again next year and somehow supplement that in next year to, with the pay scale. I think we need to look what Mr. Sops said with pay scales first of all. I think we need to just, need to try to fix, fix what's going on here. I don't, I, I mean, this all goes back to the pay with me and, and with what Sops said. Is somebody in this office in Office C just performing really well? Office A is not performing at all. Why should Office A get a raise? Office C, no. I, I agree with what he said, which I think would have a lot of value of, uh, what we're talking about with insurance and stuff. Uh, um, I mean, you, you got people out here. It's good for them, but a little off, that's a little off subject. It is off subject. Not really. I don't.
No, I'm just asking your thing, but talking, the, uh, well, it is, it's hard to, uh, go for his payment, sure.
So should we not let them know what's going to happen before this happens?
We, we'll, we will contact each one that has just children and say, look, it's coming up X amount of dollars if you still want to do. This is the month that they can put on or take off with no penalty at all.
Over the month begins.
So today.
Today.
Today is the first working day in September. That's why we kind of need to get all this in perspective. Yeah, and we just get it changed and we get a notification to her, she gets it changed. Uh, any other time, you can't add and drop someone unless you have a qualifying event. But during September, it is what it is. And, you know, I, I don't know a lot of them have it on there because their other option of having children at different places was higher, so.
And I am concerned that happens with the taxpayers over here. I'm very concerned. I think we probably overlooked something earlier. I would say somebody.
Well, it's possible. Uh, there, you know, I might be commenting, talking to me this minute. We have a motion on, on dependent coverage to increase that amount.
It was in. They read, I'm writing a proposal that was submitted. There was recommendations of the increase.
It's a matter of budget consideration, not with regard to the, well, what it, bid, I guess, is true, rescinded the August fifteenth, now. Okay, got you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, on charge of the dental insurance back to the employee who had it.
We'll put a specific number on that.
I, I plan to check and make sure that I understand by the email that I had gotten that for the bag or if we're going to go on that other, because it would be something that coming last, what the other one, uh, sure, we have to do is just go with which one it was. Okay. And then that makes it like three eighteen charge.
What?
Three eighteen. Go from two seventy to three eighteen in that grade.
Two seventy to three eighteen?
We are two eighty-three, yes. Medical dental, two eighty-three, and the three eighteen will be medical and dental also.
And that includes dental?
Yes, sir.
Three eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Like broad, be like that, cause three, yes, toward three or anything else.
Yeah. We should have gotten, definitely get the changes. I, I, we should have gotten that. We should change one up. And I won't have to, I'm going to sit up. This is me.
Just give us a second. A second. Okay. Well, motion for Commissioner Ross and Secretary of Commissioner Wiley to, uh, increase the child or children dependent coverage, um, to a cost of three hundred and eighteen dollars. That does include dental. Fall in favor?
Fall in, uh, yeah, carry. Four one. Very good matter, way down. I think we also need to think about our next agenda, since it wasn't on this one, about front man. Okay, I want all around the county. I mean, all around the state. So I'm, I'm trying to structure it, so.
Make sure we get them on next agenda.
They're getting all around here. Everybody round this, uh, this, uh, bar man.
We'll see if we can take care of this week.
Right, right, brother, next week. Get some bar man here. Most of you good, yeah.
Check. Post it down by Commissioner Frith, Secretary of Commissioner Paul, all favor.
Yeah, let's go.